To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the United States of America and the citizens in all our perfect friendship among the United cultures.
Commissioner Henry, would you please lead us in prayer?
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and serve our community today. God, we pray for wisdom and discernment as we conduct business. As we make decisions that will impact others, we ask for your guidance to do good, being in the positions of leadership. We also pray for peace in this fallen world. We pray for world leaders whose decisions affect nations. We pray for the innocents that are impacted by war. Lord, we pray for Israel. Lord, show them compassion and mercy. Please protect those in harm's way. God, we thank you for the blessing you have so freely given, Eddie County. For the business and for the hardworking men and women that contribute to the success we are seeing. Help us all to remember we are walking this path together as neighbors, friends, and as community. Let us honor you in all we do here today. We ask this in your holy son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, everybody. We have a full house here today. And due to the overwhelming public response, the number of people that are here today, I would like to see a motion to have item number two on the trailing agenda moved ahead of everything on the timed agenda and be the first item discussed today.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Kerr, would you please call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
With that said, in regards to item number two, which is the proposed construction of the new jail administration building and courthouse, I'd like to thank each and every person that took the time to reach out to express their concerns regarding this project. I feel like a project of this magnitude should receive public input and the public should be involved in the decision-making on this. We dropped the ball there, and as your chairman for that, I apologize. With that said, and due to the hundreds of emails, phone calls, social media posts that I myself and I'm sure the other commissioners have received, that along with my own personal feelings, I would like to see a motion to table this project until we can have a proper town hall meeting and presentation.
So I move. Second.
I would like furthermore, before we go on to that, guys, I would like this town hall meeting to be held within the next thirty days at the Eddie County Courthouse. I would also like to see one held in Artesia. And only after that, after we have a formal town hall and a presentation to the community, should this be brought before us for a decision.
So move. I'll amend it. One second.
Are we good there?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
I would also, before we move any further, I would like to move to have commissioners' comments brought up after public comments.
We could do that, Mr. Chairman. We just need a motion to move item number fourteen in the trailing agenda up after public comments and announcements.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
You have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
And Cordova?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with all that being said, I would also like to um entertain a motion to table item number six on the trailing agenda. If we could, please make a motion to pull that item.
Anybody? Do we have a motion?
Do we just need to motion to table it? I'll make a motion to table item six, budget adjustment for Eddie County Capital Project Civil Sites and Utility Design.
I'll second that.
You have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all that being said, we'll go into our timed agenda, uh, public comments and announcements. I'll go ahead and start really briefly. I did receive one public comment, um, that would like to be read aloud. This public comment is from Sharon Evans. She states, "I will not be able to attend the meeting, but I do want my voice heard. There has been a courthouse on that spot since eighteen ninety-one. I see no reason to change its location. Altering historical sites of Carlsbad for something shiny and new and calling it progress is not always a good thing. I don't want this to become another La Caverna or Crawford Hotel disaster of which people are mad about and still discussing to this day. All you have to do is read the comments on the three I remember living in Carlsbad Facebook pages to see that. Between the three, there are fifteen thousand five hundred current and former residents of Carlsbad who miss all the things Carlsbad used to offer but no longer exist. Don't make the courthouse one of them. Our historical sites need to be preserved. Thank you, Sharon Evans." With that, I'll go ahead and open it up to the audience for any public comments and announcements.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Ms. Walters.
Could you just please state your name for the record, please?
You all don't know me.
We definitely do.
I'm just a frequent flyer here. My name is James Walters. I'm a resident of Otis. Some of y'all may not know where Otis is, but that's where I live. Anyway, my main concern is the Otis Gym right this moment, and uh I found out last week by just looking at emails that there is a bid, an invitation for bids for demolition of the Otis Gym. That's a total shock to me in the sense that, I mean, I knew that there was maybe talk about something, but as far as seeing that on the county agenda, I mean, well, county did uh the webpage that has the bids and all that. It was a shock, and I talked to the county manager about that. She says, "Well, it's just to get a, a, how much it's gonna cost to tear it down, knowing that there's asbestos and lead in it." But anyway, I, I think y'all need to have a town hall in Otis, preferably at the Otis Community Center before May seventh, because that's the date it says on that schedule that it comes before the commission to decide on whether to accept the win the bid for demolition of Otis Commu- uh Gym. So anyway, I think we've had that before, back in the nineties when the county backed out of a bid for selling Otis, the Otis School property. And they, and we had a meeting, sixty people attended in the gym to keep, and the people voted, wanted to keep the property and turn it into a community center, and that's what the county finally did. So we, we strongly think y'all should follow suit, which you just did with the courthouse, and have a town hall meeting for the Otis residents to voice their opinion. And on top of that, we found out that uh the plan was to tear it down and build a splash pad. Six hundred thousand dollar splash pad. Commissioner Carlson wasn't aware of it, and I know Commissioner Beard wasn't aware of that. So it sounds like this is not a topic that's been discussed by the commission. So anyway, I wish, or I hope y'all will follow suit and have a town meeting, town hall meeting at the Otis Community Center. On top of that, I hope y'all will start renting the place out. I hear there's structural damage. I see no structural damage other than the side door on the southeast corner where the edge of it is broken off. That's it. I don't know where the structural damage is that I've heard of. In the gym itself, you, it looked, you drive, walk around it. I walked around Sunday. The only one thing I found was, was a downspout uh that had fallen on the ground. That's it. It looks imprestine, like it's been sitting there five years, and the commission voted five years ago to not repair it because they're conditions. It's been sitting in limbo ever since. Please have a town hall meeting in Otis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Horton. I'm an attorney in Carlsbad, and I wanted to address the courthouse issue. That courthouse is, you've already heard how long it's been there. Uh, I think of importance to the legal community is the fact that lawyers' offices are around the courthouse. They're designed to, to get them to the courthouse as quickly as possible for hearings. Uh, the town is built up around the courthouse, so when there's a trial and, and that, that trial lets out for a brief period for lunch, people can go get something to eat and come back and, and be there. Uh, if the courthouse is moved further south to the industrial park, uh, my concern is that people are gonna have to negotiate the oilfield traffic to get to and from courthouse, and the whole way that things run will have to, to shift dramatically. I would ask the Commissioners, I know you've put a lot of work into getting a plan put together uh for this new courthouse complex in the industrial park, and I'm sure it's, it's a good plan. But I would ask you first, before you vote on putting that plan into action, that you take a look at the alternative, uh, or one of many alternatives. I would suggest that if you're gonna tear down that detention center, which probably does need to be replaced badly, if you're gonna tear that down, that property can be used for a, a multi-level parking structure uh up behind the cavern center, and that would, that would help downtown in general for any kind of event that takes place there. You could then have the room to expand that courthouse on the east side and the north side, uh, almost to the sidewalk, uh, so that the neighborhood uh continues to thrive and, and be centered around the courthouse. It would not disturb the south courthouse lawn, which is used for public events. Uh, but by expanding to the north and to the east, uh, you would have enough room to put in not just one, but perhaps two or three more courtrooms. Uh, as Carlsbad expands, we're likely to need that many more judges. I would encourage the commission to make a personal visit to the courthouse in Chavas County in Roswell and see what they've done there. That old courthouse uh has been preserved completely. There's a ceremonial courtroom there, just as there is in our courthouse. Uh, it's been expanded, uh, in that case to the east, and uh there's a parking lot uh to the east of that on the next block, just as we would have in a multi-level parking structure. Uh, but you would see, if you go there, how well that's been put together. Uh, there is both a magistrate court and the district court in the same building. Uh, we could take magistrate court off Wood Street down, uh, down near Walmart, put it together with the district court. Uh, everything would be in one place, and you would preserve uh, uh, the community. The legal community uh would continue to be centered around the district courthouse and now around the district courthouse as well. I would ask the Commissioners, please consider that, uh, look at our technical plans and speak with them and, and uh see what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Norbert Drepper, resident of Eddie County. A recent, a recent puff piece in the Carlsbad Local calls our previous mayor a champion for Cavern City Kids for recognizing the importance of nurturing Carlsbad's youth and families. But without benefiting from nurture and protection during the first nine months of their lives, how will Carlsbad's most precious resources ever enjoy water parks, splash pads, golf courses, golf fields, et cetera? After all, humans do not spring into existence at the moment as their earth, perhaps dangling from a stork's beak, but start growing nine months earlier in the presumed safety of their mother's wombs. And that early, safe, and interrupted growth is the necessary precondition for everything else. Most former and current representatives and community leaders still suffer from literally terminal paralysis when challenged to match their good intentions, as expressed in your uh prayer, to begin with, and aspirations with deeds and accomplishments during the first nine months of these natural resources exist. From nineteen seventy-three until twenty twenty-two, they had the flawed, but somewhat plausible excuse that the Supreme Court had legalized child murder during pregnancy. When the court finally acknowledged no such license in our constitution, the abortion issue reverted, just as other criminally sanctioned offenses such as robbery, rape, and murder to the states and their citizens. We and you can no longer afford to hide behind black robes. Some states, for example Texas, and New Mexico communities such as Clovis, Hobbs, and Eunice, and Lee and Roosevelt Counties have recognized their moral, legal, and political obligations and stopped welcoming or even tolerating the treatment of children in the womb as garbage disposable at will or whim. We can and must follow their lead, stand strong against our murderous state government, and save our most precious resources from annihilation. We and you cannot escape the stark choice. Treat residents of Eddie County inside wombs as valued constituents or the same way as roadkill or spoiled meat. Hope you please pass this on.
Thank you.
Any other public comments and announcements?
Sandy Wilkie. Um, I wanna applaud you for tabling this issue until you can have more public input. That was important. As you said, um, looking at the, the social media on this, most residents will be happy to support whatever renovations need to be done to our existing courthouse to keep it where it is. I also am in agreement that the detention center could definitely be moved in that spot in order to re- revitalize our downtown area. Speaking as a former business owner in the downtown area, we desperately need parking down there for our events, and that would be an outstanding thing to do with that. But I do applaud you for being willing to listen and to represent your constituents as you should. And uh please keep our courthouse where it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will go ahead and move um into County Commissioner comments.
Commissioner Beard, you wanna start us off?
Oh joy, I get to go first again. I appreciate one of the major complaints with a solution being offered instead of just poking the eye with a sharp stick. We've all had a bunch of that lately. I don't wanna say a lot, but if that is a courthouse, that magnificent old building will still be close to the public. There's no way those front doors are going to be allowed to be open in public access as long as it's a court. That is a simple matter of fact. Because of the security, the requisite security under state law, you've got to pretty well keep that place shut down. That courthouse is a museum. It is old. It, the, the southwest architecture in that thing is magnificent. When, and I know you can't answer, was the last time any of you were able to walk through those two front doors, and that would be on the south side, not the north side with the metal detector? And walk up those magnificent staircases, walk up and down those halls, look at the history, the photographs. That used to be a multipurpose building. The, the structure contained the county businesses. I can remember magistrate court was in there, the county commission met in there, the doors were wide open, people came and went all day. That's a magnificent building. And until the court, not the courthouse, the court is moved to a brand-new, modern, safe structure that we have planned for, albeit down south, I know there's a lot of pushback on that. That courthouse will never be open to the public again, and that's just kinda the way it is. So with that, I'll, Mr. Henry, have a shot at it.
Okay, I'll keep everything I have very short for the most part, uh, addressing the first comment we had about the Otis Gym. Um, I, I'd love to see some pictures, make sure what we've been told is there's major structure damage. Um, that, that might not be repairable. So I would like to see that. As far as the splash pad goes, I was fully aware of it. I mean, that's capital outlay money. So for anyone in the public listening to that six hundred thousand dollar figure, that figure's correct, but that is capital outlay money coming from Santa Fe that's being put into Otis. Um, for those that don't know what a splash pad is, uh, it's, it's a pretty cool, you know, we're doing one right now in Artesia with the same kind of capital outlay money from two years ago. Uh, it offers a space for families to go run around on, on not a concrete pad. I don't know what kind of material, padding material, um, and water, different water features. It might be a really cool feature for, for folks out in Otis, not sure. Um, I would hope it would be, but, but I'm more than happy. I'd love to see the, uh, make sure that we're correct on, on the integrity of that building and making sure that Otis residents uh obviously have the full details on that. As far as the courthouse goes, lots and lots of comments. Um, I really do appreciate your, your comment this morning to help us maybe think through some things, look at things. And I think that's why the, the slowdown is necessary, um, to make sure that, that we look at all potential possibilities. The biggest comment I got, well, two of the biggest comments I got, and I, I wanna correct it, uh, is the structure will be sold and/or torn down. This commission has no intention of ever selling and/or tearing it down. I know there was something on Facebook apparently from a, from a while back where it said, "Yes, the courthouse could be sold." I can tell you, as far as this group goes, um, I would be shocked. I, I would never vote to sell and/or tear down the courthouse. It's not possible to tear it down. It's a historical site, number one. The second biggest comment I got, um, was, "We wanna make, we want to keep it to where we can have everything that we do out front." So no matter what direction this goes or how we can, how we fix it, whether it's, it's expanding it right there or moving or whatever happens, that, that will always be a possibility and, and a use for Carlsbad. That's the whole reason to keep it. That's the whole reason to continue to use it uh as the beaut- I mean, driving by it this morning, I took an extra glance at it as I drove by. I didn't glance very long because traffic is tough, right? And so you don't wanna cause a problem, but uh it is. It's beautiful. I, I, nobody can disagree with that. It's a, it's a incredibly uh important piece to Carlsbad. Um, and, and we would never, never make a decision to alter that beauty, um, and, and that piece to Carlsbad. And we would never stop any use from, from the lawn, um, which seems to be one of the biggest uh confusions there. Folks have, "Well, we wanna continue to have our farmers markets. We wanna continue to have all the things that Carlsbad does around the courthouse." Uh, we want that too. I mean, obviously, that's an important part of Carlsbad as well. So no matter which way that goes, the two pieces I wanna make sure everybody's very, very uh clear on is we have zero intention of ever tearing down and/or selling that structure. Um, and as far as anything outside, uh, all activities that have happened for generations, I would expect those to continue to go for future generations as well. So, um, that building's a, a crucial piece. We fully understand that. Um, I think taking another look at it's important. Again, I'm gonna continue to thank you for your comment because I think those are the kind of comments that help us think. Some of the comments I got don't help us think. Um, so, uh, those that actually put input and, and thought behind it, I really do appreciate that because that's how we're gonna get this done as a community and get it done together. Um, and no matter what the outcome of this is, whether it stays right there or goes, because I got yeses too, move it. Um, I, I think I was the only one because I asked, and I, so there wasn't a lot of yeses, so I'm not saying that. But, but I did get some folks saying, "Hey, it does need to move. We, we get it." So no matter what way this goes, someone's not gonna like the outcome of it, a- and, and that's terrible. But I think we do need to have more community understanding, um, and discussion so that when the decision is made either way, um, at least folks feel like they were heard, which is the most important thing. Um, and, and at least their thoughts were taken into account. So I appreciate those that are here today, um, to continue to have this discussion. I will very much appreciate the conversations we're going to have, uh, at the public hearings. And that's how we, that's how we do community. That's how we do community well. And that should be our expectations of y'all, and that should be y'all's expectation of us. It goes both ways. And so I do appreciate that, and thank y'all.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna kinda echo some of the things that, that Commissioner said. And, and one of those is that I was born and raised here in Carlsbad. I grew up. The courthouse has always been a centerpiece for the community. It's always been a historical structure in the pub, and I would never vote, never vote to do anything that would, uh, degrade the courthouse or, or, you know, take away from the use of it or for sure never vote to sell it or to, uh, tear it down. That's just what's ridiculous, uh, even comment that I could never understand. And I don't think anybody on this commission would ever, uh, vote to do something like that. One of my problems is, is when we're not here. You know, there's always the future, and, and so we need to do something, whatever the end result is, in my opinion, is we need to do something that makes sure that there's presidential, uh, preservation funding for that courthouse and, and the maintenance and preservation of it in the future. One of the other things that I wanted to address is, is one of the things that Mr. Walters brought up. And, uh, as we know, uh, Commissioner Henry and I was on the commission five years ago when the Otis Gym and, and facility was brought up, and we were informed at that time that it wasn't, uh, it wasn't, uh, repairable at that time. And, and there was a vote, and, and that vote was to divest ourselves of that property. Now, that was advertised when that vote was made, and there wasn't a single person that showed up to, to, uh, protect the Otis Gym at that time. As a matter of fact, I believe, if you'll check the record, I was the only vote, was, was a no vote because of, of, uh, not being able to fix it, that it was unrepairable. That was the comment that was made to it. But I still voted because I thought it was important history for the area of, of the Otis Gym. And so to say that it wasn't ever addressed by the public or, or wasn't presented to the public, that is not, that is not a true statement because it was, and it was voted on by the commission. The only two commissioners on that, on that board at the time was Commissioner Henry and myself. And I just wanted to make that straight, that it wasn't something that was behind the scenes that all of a sudden, because what it was, was five years ago, it was voted on to divest ourselves of that property, along with some others. So, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Cordova?
As with the other Commissioners, I would just like to really say thank you to everybody that expressed their concern and also their suggestions about the courthouse. I can say truthfully that we value the public's input very much. And it has the biggest factor in the decisions that we make. We try to make good decisions for the community with the resources that we have. That being said, I really respect everybody's passion about this. I know that I did not get back to every phone call that was made to me, and I apologize about that. And I want to applaud Commissioner Bowen, our chairman, for, um, you know, coming forward and, you know, we didn't do our due diligence and get public input first before this came out. Um, but I look forward to the meetings that we're going to have and your suggestions, Mr. Horton. I think that your ideas are very good. Um, and I can say personally for myself, detention has been a very big, um, issue to me. We desperately need some changes in our detention center for our employee safety and, uh, the resident's safety over there. I think that transparency is the most important thing that we can do and provide as a commission, handling your interests and your money. And so I would really encourage everybody that has a vested interest or opinion to please make these hearings. You know, please make the time to come and let your opinion and your ideas be known to us. That being said, you know, please, please keep calling if you have any concerns or questions. We will do our very best to provide that information to you. And, um, I just wanna say thank you to the commission for being so understanding and caring towards the, towards our citizens today. So, thank you.
Okay. First and foremost, thank you to everybody that reached out. Over the past forty-eight hours, I've responded to every email that I've been sent. I've answered every phone call, returned every phone call. If I've missed one or two, I apologize. That being said, there was probably over five hundred of you that I spoke to over the last forty-eight hours. In that time, I had not one person in support of anything going forward with the courthouse. And in a couple of the conversations that I've had, um, Judge Riley, you were one of them. It made me realize that we dropped the ball, I dropped the ball in not having a public town hall prior to this be brought to the commission. And that is my responsibility, and I apologize for that. I hope that what we've done today rectifies our mistake, and that we can move forward in a productive way to come together as a community. And whatever the outcome is, we all have input, and we can all agree that it's best for the community going forward. As Commissioner Cordova said, transparency in government is of the utmost importance to me. And through some of the conversations that I had over the weekend, I realized that we were lacking that, and I don't sit well with that. So, I'm hoping again that these meetings, I think that, uh, I think that holding it in the courthouse. The, the first one in the courthouse is going to be big. It allows people to come in, we're, we're inviting you into the horn's nest, um, so to speak, the, the point of contention. We can see what we're talking about, it becomes measurable, physical, you have all the senses being met during this meeting. So I encourage people to show up. Mr. Horton, thank you for your, your time, your consideration, your comments. Those are a lot of things that I have considered myself over the past few days, and I certainly appreciate that. I look forward to hearing more comments like that. Um, a couple of the things that were brought up, the Chavas County courthouse, I have looked into that. And they had some different. Parameters that they were able to, they were able to expand to the back, um, because of the, what they own there, parking lot. And, and they, they have a different situation than what we have there, what we have here. So while I do appreciate that idea, I think that we have a little different situation. And these are all things that we still need to consider, but, because Chavas County was able to do it, does not mean that Eddie County will be able to do it. That being said, we're talking about the courthouse, we're not talking about the, the jail being moved. And I think that's something very important to the community as well. Um, that, that's been overlooked in, in all of this, because it's been moved in together. And I still want to reiterate how important I feel that moving the jail off to Corales is. You should not be able to go check your mail, go cash your paycheck, and then go visit your brother-in-law in jail, all in the same block. That, that's not community, that's not something that we should be able to do. That's my opinion, but that's, that's how I feel. So I would still like to be able to move forward with moving the jail as quickly as possible to its proposed location. Once again, thank everybody, I want to thank everybody for reaching out. I was put in this position by the citizens of Eddie County, and I really value their input and their opinions. My opinion doesn't weigh any heavier than any of yours, so I listen to the people that, that have spoke out. All I am is merely a talking head to the citizens of this community. So if I'm not listening to you guys, I'm not doing my job. So once again, I appreciate everybody's input. That's it, let's move on.
Real quickly, I want to say one last word. Commissioner Bowen's not the only one that's responsible for not seeing this coming and having the foresight to have input on this. I am just as guilty as he is, I was here when that jail was built, and I remember that backlash against it. I for one should have really been the guy who saw this coming, and I apologize.
I, I, I just want to say, I, I one hundred percent agree with you, we need to move as fast as we can to approve moving the detention center outside of town. I, I think that that should be expedited as soon as possible to move that detention center. Because it is ridiculous that we have a detention center in the center of Carlsbad.
But I do think, Commissioner Bowen, what Fred just said, I think all five commissioners would, would, would. Put out our apologies for the movement, for not seeing this, so, um, you can't take it all, it's all five of us, um, and, uh. But we appreciate, we appreciate you stepping up and making sure it happens, so.
Delegate the duty, not responsibility. It's like you can delegate the duty, not responsibility.
Okay, moving on to service boards. First we, first one we have is Timothy Howard at our sheriff's office, in twenty years.
Twenty years.
All right, three, two, one. All right, thank you. Next we have is Raymond Wissup from the sheriff's office, ten years. Three, two, one. Thank you. Next we have Danny Smith from the sheriff's office, five years.
No Silva either, he's busy working on a pretty good case.
Garrett Silva's not here, but he's from the sheriff's office with five years. And last we have, and last we have Michelle Boudry, sheriff's office, five years, she's also not here.
She's under control, she's out taking care of county.
Next we have Gilberto Ramos from the Public Works, fifteen years, he's not here, but. Next we have Patricia Carrasco, Finance, fifteen years. And finally we have Kenneth Dewey from the Detention Center, ten years. Three, two, one. Thank you. We can just take a short break, um, to have some pictures taken out here. Moving to item three, IFB RFP bid awards, we have RFP twenty-four oh two, emulsified ceiling services for Eddie County and Partnering County. Ms. Brianna?
Hi, um, RFP twenty-four oh two, emulsified ceiling services. Um, we're looking to award the RFP that was solicited on February eighth, twenty twenty-four. The county received three submissions from Desert West Enterprises, Inner Mountain Slurry Seal, and IPR Limited. All three were deemed responsive, meeting mandatory specifications, based on this, we're recommending a multi-source award to all three vendors.
Any questions?
Questions? All right.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
What else?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our trailing agenda, we have commission meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there anything that we need to pull for further discussion? I'll look for a motion to approve the commission, commission meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
I'm staying.
Bowen?
Yes.
And Cordova.
Oh, yes, sorry. I'm sorry, yes.
Next we have commission meeting minutes for April second, twenty twenty-four.
I'll look for a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for April second, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. And last we have expense approval report for March twenty twenty-four.
Anything we need to look out for further discussion? I'll look for a motion to approve the expense approval report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Moving on to item three, move Eddie County to dot gov domain, Ms. Carol Hennington?
Morning. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I am here to report that we need to move our Eddie County domain to a dot gov. Currently, we have a dot US, as you know in your email, it's COEddieNM dot US. And that was issued, uh, let me go ahead and open up this, with some history. And dot gov is called a top-level domain, it's only for US-based governments. And it began, they started the dot gov domain in nineteen eighty-four, derived from government. Uh, we got our dot US in January two thousand and three, and that was issued to state and local governments at the time, that's the only one you could get. Um, in twenty twenty-one, Cyber Security and Infrastructure Agency took over the management of it. And removed the fee, which was about four hundred dollars that, uh, to register in. Since two thousand and twenty-three, um, that Cyber Security and Infrastructure Agency has been recommending. That states, locals, and tribal governments move to the dot gov. Excuse me. The benefits of that is that the dot gov is something that the public identifies as official trusted information. Uh, and only, uh, US-based government organizations can get the dot gov. And I don't know how long it's been, but all of a sudden I've learned that the dot US is now available to anybody. Uh, a citizen, a foreign entity, and so, the dot US is no longer associated with just state and local governments. Now, and then the govern-, dot gov domain are free to eligible government organizations. The, uh, on the right, it's like, uh, tells how that dot gov organization ver-, makes sure that you follow these guidelines. So that it is more secure and more trusted. Recently, I received a, uh, email from that CISA organization. And also Homeland Security, where they said that, um, CISA and FBI recommend all election offices adopt a dot gov domain. To help election offices and other state, local, tribal, and territorial government entities to migrate. Uh, to these, uh, dot gov domains. Because it would prevent impersonation of websites and, uh, emails. The examples of that were like, in, uh, Pennsylvania, they had a, um, domain for voting. Uh, it was like votepa dot com, the, that was a fake one, votespa dot com. You can buy any of those that are just similar, um, then they moved to the votepa dot gov. So it was more assured that it is the, the, uh, legal site. Also with email, if you receive an email from a dot gov, you are more confident that this is genuine government information. From Department of Homeland Security, they, um, believe that threat actors are likely to converge on the twenty twenty-four election session, season. Russia, China, and Iran are likely to see the upcoming election season in twenty twenty-four as an opportunity. To conduct overt and covert influence campaigns using AI, artificial intelligence software. Aimed at shaping favorable US policy outcomes toward themselves and undermining US stability. And they will ramp up these efforts in advance of the election. So that's why they are really highly promoting that everybody goes to a dot gov. So they won't have those issues. The, uh. As of March of twenty twenty-four, on that dot gov site registration, it shows there's ten thousand twenty-eight agencies. That have registered with dot gov, which includes twelve hundred states and affiliated departments. I looked up, um, we have got some dot gov for our state, New Mexico, NM dot gov. They still have a few with the dot US, but they're moving over to the dot gov. Um, in, uh, counties, ten out of thirty-three New Mexico counties have moved to the dot gov. The changes that will, uh, result in it is that your email will probably be your name at EddieCountyNM dot gov. They require a state at the end of it, to, you know, make it a unique, uh, domain name. And then our website would be the EddieCountyNM dot gov. So that would result in changes to anywhere where our email, our websites are, for example, business cards, letterheads, any marketing. And you'll also have to notify your, uh, contacts. Um, we'll have to, you know, notify the public. Uh, currently, we will still maintain the dot US and dot org, uh, because you can like forward those to the newer one. It will, uh, give more public assurance of a dot gov domain. That we're unequivocally an official s- site. And that we are legitimate and authorized government agency. So the proposal is to register for a dot gov domain, it's a multi-step process. Um, we've prepared an implementation plan and timeline. We've prepared an implementation plan and timeline that fits within everyone's schedule and allocate resources, which that's what I am here to ask you to approve, is allocate resources of what it would cost for like changing business cards and, uh, you know, wherever we have to, uh, an unknown expense at this time. You have any questions?
So we don't know the cost right now?
Well, because it's free to register, a lot of the effort of getting to the .gov is through our department, uh, through normal time. I know that we're gonna move, uh, we'll, we'll register our .gov and to support pointing to that .gov, we're gonna go to another provider. And, uh, that's gonna cost, I don't know, I don't know if similar, right now, we pay twenty-five dollars a month and probably similar to that for another one. It's probably a lot of that effort. And then deciding, are people going to want to, uh, get new business cards right away? Do you just wanna mark it out, you know, whatever? And then on that, we had, you know, I have the estimated cost on the agenda request is, right now, for five hundred, it's about two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty dollars to have, uh, imprint those, uh, business cards.
And that would be your biggest expenses because most people that have business cards, you're talking about quite a bit of people that you'd have to be replacing the business cards. So I don't know.
The only question I have is just the, the trans, transferring over from the emails, right? E- everybody that continues to email, they can email the old address and will still get the emails.
At, yes, at some point, well, let me see.
Jason?
Yes, but at some point, we'll cut it off.
Okay. Right, but, but there, there's a grace period that allows it to where we don't start losing. Okay. Questions? I will look for a motion to move Eddy County to a got, got, uh, .gov domain.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next item is consideration to explore option, options of a new county logo. So this is also a new proposal that I'm bringing to you. Thank you. If you guys just wanna scroll up, that'd be great. I'm bringing this to you as a consideration to propose, um, to change our county logo. The last time our county logo was changed was back in June of twenty fourteen, two county managers ago. Prior to that, um, it had been quite a while since the county logo was changed. That is our current logo right now. The logo prior to that, uh, was ironically a picture of the courthouse, if you wanna scroll up a little bit. So that was the logo prior to. So as the, the county continues to evolve, um, as we're gonna go to a .gov domain, hopefully, it would be the intention to hopefully change all of this at once, um, especially if the consideration is approved and we explore options, we would reach out to elected officials, county employees, um, staff to get their input on a county logo. And if we decide to move in that direction, it would be the intent to change all at once because if not, then we would be changing business cards, for example, to our .gov domain, and then if we made the decision after the fact, we would then have to change them again. So that would be the intent is if we would go that direction, is to change everything all at once. So this is just a consideration to explore. The next steps would be actually putting together different logos and then bringing to you and county staff, um, for their consideration, um, to move forward with them.
Motion.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to, uh, con, uh, consider to explore options of a new county logo.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Twist my arm really hard to go back to the old.
Thank you. Next, we have payroll manager over hire, Ms. Brianna Shields.
Good morning. Um, the finance department is requesting an over hire for the payroll manager. Our current payer, payroll manager will be transitioning on January first, twenty twenty-five to a new role. And as this function is very essential to county operations, I'm hoping that we can get somebody in place by July first, twenty twenty-four to have plenty of overlap with the quarterly, annual reporting, and the ad hoc things that would come up through payroll processes. So this would be not currently budgeted in the preliminary budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, but an over hire of fifty-seven thousand dollars for, uh, next fiscal year to get plenty of training involved.
Seems like a necessity to me. Any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve the payroll manager over hire.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have budget adjustment for Corales Intersection Project, Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I think with the, uh, conversation we just had, this might be appropriate to bring this back to you at a later date. Um, this was a budget adjustment to go ahead and begin on the site civil and utilities design for the.
Um, no, this is, we're in the budget adjustment for the, we've already pulled that civil site and utilities.
Corales Intersection.
We're talking about Corales Intersection.
Well, there you go, sorry, I didn't know we were looking at the. It was loud out there this morning. Anyway, um.
Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Burns.
We've got a lot going on this morning. Yeah, try and keep up, there you go. Bring it down. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what we're looking for today is a million-dollar budget adjustment to go ahead and proceed with the intersection improvements of what would be the south end of the west loop on Corales and US sixty-two one eighty. Um, this has been something that we've received several concerns on. Several, you know, it's, it's hard to find, it's, it's, it's not adequate enough in late. We even observed it here a few weeks ago, um, while headed out to fire services. If there's any two type of trucks that are more than a pickup at that intersection, it's, it's difficult for them to maneuver around each other to get on and off that bypass. Um, we, we've got a design that's already kind of in place. We've already reviewed it with New Mexico D two, um, who's in support of the project. So this would be the budget adjustment to go ahead and proceed with that, um, project before the end of the fiscal year now.
Please do.
I think this is imperative, so.
I'll make a motion if we do that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Any items that we need to pull for further discussion? Hearing none, then I will look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
So moved.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Thank you. Travel request consent agenda.
Do we have any questions or further discussion? Then I'll look for a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Corova?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any emergency business this morning. We don't have any legislative, uh, business to discuss. I don't see anyone in the audience for legislative. So we'll go ahead and we'll move into elected official department comments, announcements, and updates.
I'll go first this time. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning.
Uh, first off, I wanna applaud, uh, Chairman Bowman's leadership and, and the commission's, uh, ability to, to operate on your feet and handle this. This, this could have been a nightmare, the, the courthouse situation. And I think y'all handled it with a palm and congratulations. I, I, the, the, I appreciate working with a very professional commission that, that handles things the way y'all do. It, it makes my job a lot easier, so. And I think your constituents appreciate it as well. Well, I know they do. So, coming up for the sheriff's office, we have three cadets graduating next month, uh, from the law enforcement academy, which is, I think, the most we've ever had, uh, graduated once. And then we also have, uh, ten certified applicants to choose from right now. So we'll be fully staffed here fairly quickly, uh, and then someone will leave or something will happen. You know, it just, it, that, that's how it works. But it's nice to have, I've never seen that before, ten certified applicants, ever. That's crazy. And, uh, so it shows that we're doing something right here in Eddy County, that, that folks wanna come here to work, especially in a, in a, in a career field that is struggling to find people to work in it right now. To continue to blow, uh, our horn for my, my folks, uh, we have two deputies and the commander of our drug task force that will be receiving awards from the US Attorney's Office, later this month, I think next week, if I remember correctly, uh, it'll be after the HIDA meeting, which is a pretty big deal. And, and you, you don't see that. Normally, we'll have like, maybe we'll have one, one person get an award from the US Attorney or something like that, three. And, uh, our commander's receiving a pretty high award, by the way. So, uh, Commander Leos is, is one of the best of the best. I just, and again, to continue on in this way, I just, uh, returned from DC recently, uh, went to the National HIDA Awards, where New Mexico HIDA was awarded the, the National HIDA of the Year Award. That has never happened before for New Mexico HIDA. We were competing against Chicago, we were competing against Houston, every, California, all of them. And we, we were chosen as the best. And so, uh, Executive Director, uh, Will Glassby and I were, were, and, and former Marshal, uh, Sonia Chavez, who's my, who's my counterpart on the board, we all went up and received the award, and it was, it was pretty amazing. And, uh, that, that, and everybody understands too, that a lar, large part of that award is because of Pecos Valley Drug Task Force, our drug task force. They, they do, uh, they, they do unbelievable. And so we're gonna continue to support them. A very exciting thing for me is, uh, I was chosen, I, I, I'm about to move up to, uh, third vice president, and that's as far as I get to go, uh, for National Sheriff's Association. The current president, Greg Chompont, uh, from Louisiana, realized that I'm never gonna, since I won't get to be president, I won't get to be able to do a lot of things a president does. He chose me to, uh, go and represent the national, the nation sheriffs, uh, next month, uh, during National Police Week at the, uh, National Police Officers Memorial. And I get to sit up there and, and read names. It's, it's a solemn duty to read names of fallen officers and represent the nation sheriff. So I, I'm just so excited that I was actually chosen. I'm not excited to have to read names, but it's an honor. And it's a, it's a very solemn honor, and, uh, I'm gonna go and represent Eddy County as best I can. The courthouse thing, I've got no dog in that fight. And, uh, I honestly, uh, the, the, that, that's gonna be something that, that a lot of citizens are gonna have a lot of input on, and as you all are painfully aware. I was under the impression that it was, that the courthouse would be moving. Therefore, uh, i- in the past, I have advocated for some kind of, uh, more secure parking for the judges and for, and potentially employees. Since we weren't going to, since it was gonna move, it wasn't gonna be a problem, I backed off of that. I encourage everybody to think about and, and act on. I mean, I almost wanna say I wanna demand it, but I can't demand it. But I, I think it's crucial that our judges have secure parking where they can come out and get in their vehicles. They're, they're sending people away for years to prison, and you've got emotions running heavy. I would really like to see them have something where they can drive in, closed off, and be able to get in and out of the courthouse safely. And, uh, we, we're limited on personnel, we can't escort all the time. So I would, I would encourage everybody to think about that. It's been talked about in the past, and it was like, okay, well, we're probably gonna do something different. There's no need to spend that kinda money. Well, there is now. So that's just my, my little two cents, um, on that part, on that facet of it. So, consideration would be appreciated in that direction. And other than that, I'm sure I've got a lot more, but I'm gonna be quiet because it's, keep the meeting going. So thank y'all again for all your support, appreciate you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. Any other elected officials, department comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. So just a quick update, Roberta had asked me to follow up with the total number of EMTs that we have, that question had come up. So, with career staff and volunteers, we have three first responders, thirty EMT basics, eight advanced EMTs, and seven paramedics, so that's a total of forty-eight licensed personnel. We've got seventeen, or sorry, ten that are actively testing for either basic or advanced EMT. And then we've got seven in classes, either basic or advanced EMT. We are looking at the paramedic program, it's just eighteen months of dedication for that person, so that's a lot for them to commit to. They've gotta assure that everything is right on both sides of the fence so that they can complete that. Our travel is up there for the ambulances. The two new ambulances are done, they'll actually be in Riodoso next week on display for the EMS conference. And then they'll head to Lubbock for some finalization, and then they'll be in service probably by, I'd say, May, mid-May, so. We appreciate y'all, any questions, anything else?
I would encourage that we move forward as fast as possible to get our paramedic program. Guys entered in it, working towards that.
Yeah, no, I understand and I agree, it's just a big commitment on the employee, so. It's, well, we're encouraging them, but we also have a lot that are finishing up their advanced, and they can't apply for that process until they complete that course, so. We do have six or seven that are looking at it though, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a mulligan, I should have brought it up during legislative. There's been a lot of confusion about, and I can't remember the number of the bill, but the, uh, seven-day waiting period for purchasing firearms, a lot of confusion. I was even wrong, the information I was giving out. I thought it came, I would've thought it was gonna go into effect July first. It is May fifteenth that the seven-day waiting period goes into effect. And it's kinda crazy that our FFLs and our GND have not been advised of this. It, it's very poor on the legislature's part that they have not gotten this information out. I was just talking to Jimmy Mason, uh, yesterday, and he was like, do people know about it? I was like, no, they don't. So, if, if people ask you, just for your information, it's May fifteenth, that's when that starts. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning, true morning. Just a quick update, we did, uh, the facilities team got our preventive maintenance done for the spring. Tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, we were meaning to try to finalize the bid documents for the, uh, drug task force. We get that finalized tomorrow, we can probably, within a few days, then we can get that out to our contractor's hands and really start pushing that, so. Just wanted to provide you with that update. Stan, any questions?
What's been the delay on that?
Uh, the electrical and mechanical. We've, they submitted out to a, uh, company out of El Paso, and there's some specific, uh, uh, challenges with that building, turning it into what we wanted to do, so there were some obstacles we had to overcome.
How, how long have we been on that, Trent?
I would say less than six months.
When are we gonna be finished with it? I mean, it is important to get that done.
As soon as we get it into a contractor's hands, we'll, we'll know better.
Do you have a date? I mean, I understand as soon as, soon as such and such, as soon as such and such. But I'd like. But I'd like to see a goal to get it out by a certain date so that we don't have all these delays and we can get, get it done.
The goal is six to eight months. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that have to happen in those six to eight months. So I can't promise because we don't even have a contractor on board, so.
Okay.
But I can give you, that's what we're anticipating, six to eight months of construction time with, with no unforeseen.
Let's shoot for six months.
Then I actually have one other question that was brought to me as this courthouse discussion came up. What has happened with the fourth courtroom for Judge Finger? And why has that been halted?
It, it hasn't been halted. We, we expect to move the D A's in the next two weeks down to the first floor. We expect to have the contractors bid in before weeks in and then we anticipate on awarding and moving forward.
What's been the delay on that one?
There hadn't been a delay, sir. Has not been any delay.
That's, I mean, I got some information on it, probably just like Bo did, that, that we had kinda pulled off of that.
No, no, sir, I, it, it's been full for all, the whole time. We, I didn't have any pullback on. If, if you wanna consider it delayed, we had to amend some verbiage in the R F P process. It really didn't cause a delay back when we were going out for that, to get some federal verbiage in there. Other than that, we've been going forward, but. So then, we've only been done with construction on the first floors for about two weeks. So that construction ended, you know, within a month, we're moving them down there and then we wanna start demoing this last weekend.
Yeah, those two are really important. And then just for clarification for myself, because I haven't seen it, can you explain to us the Otis Gym structural issues?
I would have to put, get the report right in front of me, but it came out in the facility assessment that was done probably a year ago. There, most of it was hazardous material, structural issues. I mean, you can walk inside the building and get past the gym. You can tell the back half of the building inside looks like that part of the building might be pure and beam. There are some structural issues there, roof leaks, hazardous material. When it was discussed before, I presented a potential price to do all the repairs and, and the instruction I was given was we would not proceed at that time.
Yeah, I recall your report on that and what it would entail. I think we had talked about this last time. We probably need to schedule a time where we can walk through the courthouse again, you know, once it's, once it's complete and everything. I don't know if it would be appropriate to do the same for the gym as well, so that we can see it for ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the HIDA building is important though, let's, let's stay on that.
HIDA building is paramount.
Yeah.
I want to see that thing finished.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you, Trent.
We appreciate your input.
Thank you, Trent. So any others? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to county manager comments. I'll just keep mine short. I just wanna also say thank you to everyone who has come out and made their comments on the courthouse, who's reached out with phone calls and emails. By no means did the county manager's office get as much as the commissioners. We did receive quite a few in the county manager's office and responded accordingly as well. I look forward to a town hall meeting to discuss and present the complex, in particular, the courthouse. So when we do set that meeting, to have the town hall meeting at the courthouse and in Artesia, we will go ahead and disseminate that information through our website, through the papers, through social media to make sure that information gets out to all the residents. So please look forward to that. Um, and with that, I'll go ahead and leave it at that. We already had our county commissioner comments. We do have executive session.
With that said, I'll look for a motion for the board may go into executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, section ten dash fifteen dash one dash H. Section two?
I'll move.
Second.
Carlson?
Oh, yes. I thought you was asking about my.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
I estimate, do we wanna do fifteen, twenty minutes? Do you wanna? Do you guys think that'll be sufficient at this point?
I, I think, I think fifteen, but let's say twenty, so we come out ahead of schedule. Never mind, never mind, I'm sorry, fifteen, fifteen, sorry, sorry.
But we can't go into, come back into session.
Yes.
I'll look for a motion to reopen the meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Just to clarify that, we've only discussed in that Department of County Commission, we only have executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, ten fifteen one H two. Executive session, we only discuss limited first-hand matters.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.